Welcome to this evening's workshop, which is a parking policy design and implementation workshop. We'll go until quarter of six because of a council meeting directly after this, so I will turn this over to City Manager Roloff.
I'm going to immediately turn it over to Transportation Director Jim Collins and our consultants from Walker Parking Consultants. Bill or Jim, which one of you is maybe, which one is going to take the lead on this?
I'll start off. Jim will also share quite a bit.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'm mainly going to let them take away their presentation, but as all of you are aware, we hired Walker Parking Consultants almost two years ago now. They did an initial study for us on parking supply and demand downtown. The initial study was if we had adequate parking supply to meet the current demand and then also look at some projected future demand as well. And that was in conjunction with looking at a possible parking ramp. That study concluded that we did have sufficient supply. And as a follow-up to that, then, we engaged Walker Parking Consultants to study how we can better manage that supply. So that's the second phase of the study that we have them working on, and that's what they're going to present tonight, is how we could better manage that supply and what are some policies that we could implement. There's some shorter-term policies that might be a little easier to implement, and then long-term strategy for the parking utility. So we have Phil Barron and Jim Corbett from Walker Parking Consultants.
Great. Thanks, Jim. And I won't repeat what Jim mentioned about the schedule. We were going to talk about it briefly, but what I will share is the current engagement process. We're on our third and final meeting, presenting to council here. We met back in May with the parking utility and obtained information, input, feedback that helped shape what we were looking at, how we were looking at it. Help identify, you know, some of the needs and policy change to improve the system. And then our second meeting was with the bid, and once again, it was a layer of refinement. We received feedback on preliminary recommendations. We took that information in, and now we're at our third and final presentation to council in this workshop. To go over how we approached this, we started off with some guiding principles. What are the goals and objectives that we should follow, adhere to, think about when we talk about policy changes? And, you know, we want to support economic development. We know parking is kind of that unseen entity that can either make or break downtowns. And so a small change can have a ripple effect. So we wanted to make sure that throughout this process, we were thinking, what would support access to downtown? What would ensure, you know, a sense of equity within the system? How would it support economic development in the long term, not just only, you know, in the immediate? We also looked at, how would the parking utility efficiently manage the inventory and provide consistent policy? We find a common thread in systems that are a bit wobbly, it's when they have inconsistent policies. A policy in one side of town, or one side of the street, or one part of a street and a different policy in another, and it creates confusion for the end user. It creates frustration, and that leads into the third, you know, which is branding and branding the system, marketing the system. That helps shape policy. When you have inconsistency, perceptions become negative. Feeling of enforcement being predatory comes up, whether it is or it isn't. And so you really have to brand and market, park it as a service that the city provides. Provide clarity of policies, and also just the aesthetics of the facilities need to be at a high level, so people feel comfortable using them. The fourth, you know, objective was to look at the system from a financial perspective and look at a sustainable model. That's not necessarily financially solvent, but just sustainable going forward. And we'll get into the difference between financially solvent and sustainable. There is debt for capital projects that this, the enterprise currently, isn't covering, and we don't envision that that'll be possible in the foreseeable future. So a sustainable model that's more solvent would be the objective.
So moving into some of the nuts and bolts of our work on this particular engagement, one of the recurring themes we've noticed in downtown Oshkosh was you have a tremendous amount of parking assets and well-placed parking assets, but to the frequent flyer or the visitor, it's kind of difficult to tell, is this a public parking location for me, or is this a permitted location? Do I need to be here, or should I not be here? And these are, again, just some examples that we put together here. Of course, we looked at your community partner with UW Oshkosh, and they've done maybe a very efficient, but maybe some may say almost overkill, on marketing their parking locations. You can see they've got various permit requires on some of the sign packages they've put out there. There's a lot of language out there that says, if I'm a commuter, or if I'm a student or my visitor, but the key elements here, they've identified the location of the parking asset, and they've essentially said, who is able to park in those locations? So we're recommending a very similar branding and marketing approach to the Oshkosh real estate, being the parking surface lots that you have scattered throughout the district. The elements that we certainly think you need to have is, of course, the Oshkosh welcome brand, the logo. Many folks, if you're a visitor or a frequent flyer, you need to have that address so that you can enter it into your mobile device to be able to map and track how to get to that specific location if you're coming into downtown. Of course, the hours of operation are always key, you know? Can I park here after 10 o'clock at night? Am I going to get towed after midnight? Or whatever the program that's in place. And then, of course, a web address and a contact phone number is a very critical element. And again, you can see, we're not recommending overcrowding or over-messaging here, but it's, there are some key components that we think that the City of Oshkosh should consider for their surface lot parking. Now, a question was asked, you know, where do we put these? Where is an efficient placement of the signs? And of course, each primary entrance to the location. You have to treat each entrance as a first-time visitor or a less-than-frequent-flyer approaches the asset. They need to be able to see that from all the entrances. So we've estimated approximately 30 signs for an estimated fee of about $10,000 total. And of course, they should be protected for, against graffiti measures and UV testing, because the sun will, over time, certainly diminish the look of the sign itself. And then, of course, the logical location is installing between, kind of the right-of-way areas there, if you will, between the roadway and the sidewalk areas, so that they're in prime viewing points at the entrance. The other thing we took a look at was, of course, the city's parking website, and I believe the last time we looked at it, this is what you see today. Kind of a minimalist post, if you will. There's certainly some good links on there that will take you to some necessary locations, but when you look at other municipal websites, the parking program, you know, they want to make it easy to understand the locations of the parking assets. Once again, if you click on a button, it'll take you to that location, and give all the highlights of that particular parking location. A GIS mapping feature is certainly critical, and an interactive map that as you mouse over the locations, it will give you vital details about that parking location. And of course, you know, it's always important to display your parking ordinances so that folks can understand the regulations that are in place. So just a few quick examples that we've recommended, but certainly there's some room for opportunity there. One of the critical items discussed with the bid and those that own real estate in the downtown bid district were, what about my residents? Where are my tenants going to park in this parking system? Mindful that many of them have assigned parking spaces for the residents, but in the case, those that do not have designated parking, we're recommending the city set up a residential parking program that so someone could actually buy a permit, an annual permit, to be able to park in one of the city assets, one of the surface lots. And instead of giving them more or less a designated space like we see out there today, that permit would give them an opportunity to park in any of the spaces, any of the surface lot spaces. Reason being behind that is when that resident is gone during the day, you don't want that space sitting unoccupied or reserved. You want folks to have access to that. And we've noticed that there were a lot of permit reserve spaces that do sit empty throughout the course of the day. So this essentially gives that person an opportunity to have a guaranteed parking space, not in a specific location, but within the parking system. And then, of course, during snow emergencies, there certainly would need to be communications as far as how that would be handled, where those residents would be required to park during snow removal and things. We're going to get into a little bit of the financial model here.
Would you recommend that the snow emergency information be put on an updated website as well?
Absolutely. If there's an opportunity to do some real-time communications, either through Twitter accounts or other messaging that the city has in place, that information should be clearly published. Everybody should know that. Good call, good catch, yes. So, as I started to say, we're going to talk a little bit about the financial modeling of adding paid-on-street parking. Remember from our presentation in January, the recommendation to move forward with exploring that and developing a model of what that looked like was determined. And this is a pretty key overview slide that you see up here in front of us. It's broken down to what the paid-street revenues and expenses would look like on the left with a net operating surplus from those revenues minus expenses. And it shows, as it exists today, what the free-on-street model looks like with parking utility budget. So you can see that there's a difference there in net operating surplus. The key element about the free-on-street model is it does not include the Oshkosh Police Department labor and operating costs. That is handled through a separate funding, as we know. The parking utility does not incur those costs today. But both models do include the parking utility debt service payment and the TIF-10 contribution, but neither model includes the annual capital repair costs. Those can certainly be specked at a 10-year look or a 15-year look and should be factored accordingly, but not knowing what that information's going to be today, we did not include this in the models there. So keep this slide in mind, we can certainly come back to it. This was a recurring visual that we presented in both prior meetings, showing essentially how we plan to align or allocate the parking. And we'll stick with the graphic on the left first. This is what the off-street would look like. The three-hour visitor free parking, actually, it's a green shade there, you can't see it with the condition of slide there, but in the center, that straddles Main Street on either side by a block. The idea is, if you're going to have paid-on-street parking, you want to make sure that you offset that with three-hour free visitor parking in the surface lots on either side there. You step it back another block or two in either direction from the three-hour visitor, and that's where you want to put your employee permit parking in those areas there. So ideally, you want to keep your visitors close to the businesses and still be able to come up with a solution for your employees to park. The graphic on the right shows what the on-street program would look like, and we've got a two-hour paid program, which on the next slide you'll see, that encompasses about 340 on-street spaces from as far north as Parkway to the north, all the way down south to CP Avenue there. And again, it straddles that same concept of visitor parking, being one block in either direction of Main Street, with kind of a little jag that covers some of the additional business district there to the left. Stepping that back, you're going to see a four-hour freed parking on-street, again, for all visitors and employees that would need that parking. And then, of course, we've protected the residential parking areas outside of that. You'll see it to the north there, as well as the residential area to the east there, that those would maintain four-hour parking. The concept behind this, again, is to be in play from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. That would be the guidelines of the parking program moving forward. Once again, here's the display of where the 340-metered spaces would be that exist with the bid district there. The idea behind our recommendation here is that it would be a two-hour premium curbside space with the first 30 minutes free to anyone electing to park in those spaces. By creating this paid parking system, we've certainly seen other cities create a 10% to 15% availability during the hours of operation. That's, you'll see that inventory increase during peak. So the pay station program we're recommending is 24 pay stations scattered throughout that paid parking system, and you'll see those identified by the yellow stars on the map there. And ideally, you don't necessarily need a pay station in every block, that would essentially be overkill. The concept behind it is that all the pay stations are linked, and you can pay at any pay station, depending on the direction you're heading for your business, or whatever your downtown pleasure may be. You don't have to pay at the pay station in the exact same block that you've paid there. We are, of course, recommending a pay-by-plate system. We see many municipalities moving more towards using the license plate as the credential. This takes away the pay-by-space concept. In a pay-by-space, it requires additional inventory to somehow mark or identify that space. We've seen some in the snow communities, such as where we're at here. Some folks will take a meter post and put a space placard on that top of that meter post, and when you do have the heavy snow, you can still identify the space. Painting the curbs here in Oshkosh would not work. You wouldn't be able to see that during those times of year. So the pay-by-plate solves that, solves all of that challenge there. The rate that we're recommending there is a $1 per two-hour limit. So if you do the math, the first half hour free, you'd be paying essentially $1.50 for two hours, 75 cents an hour, which is comparable to what we find in Appleton today, in Appleton's downtown courts, 75 cents an hour. But to get the first 30 minutes free, you actually have to actuate or engage that pay station. You've got to go up and start your session. You can't just assume that somebody's going to be tracking, you'll be there for 30 minutes. You have to start that session so that it's recorded in the equipment. And then, of course, we recommend the overlay of the mobile payment option, the pay-by-phones that you see in a lot of communities today. There are a lot of neat things you can do with the pay-by-phone policies, such as coordinating a free holiday parking on Black Friday or Small Business Saturday right after the holiday seasons. Those are very big opportunities to help promote the Oshkosh parking process itself. I don't want to kind of labor with all of the details, but we're going to real quickly go through the model here. These were all of the revenue categories that exist today with the permit system, as well as, I'll draw your attention to the two green highlighted line items there on the revenue site. We're projecting about $256,000 in revenue by the, from the, generated by the pay stations or the meters alone, and an additional $90,000 worth of parking citation that would be issued specifically to violators in the lots, extending that three-hour time limit or parking without permit, or spending their time beyond their paid parking session on-street. So those two factors, including leaving the bid and the TIF factors in there, brings us to a total of $430,000 in annual revenue for the parking utility. Quite a bit of expense has been incorporated in here. There are some encumbered or existing parking utility or finance, parking finance folks that we are leaving those positions within this model. We're recommending a couple of new positions dedicated specifically to the parking utility. That would be a maintenance person, be responsible for maintaining the equipment. Collection folks, you've got to have folks go around collecting the fees out of the pay stations. And then two dedicated PEOs, as a function of the Oshkosh Police Department, to specifically enforce the pay stations from that 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. A number of associated costs with maintaining, the operating cost with maintaining the equipment, and then, of course, you've got some existing costs, operating expenses that exist today from the parking utility. So when you add those two up, go to the next slide here, including the parking utility debt contribution, you're showing that $432,000 plus in revenue, minus $383,000 in expenses for a net operating surplus of just shy of $50,000 a year. Now, the piece that we haven't talked about yet, and this is how we're going to leave the presentation today, is the one-time capital cost to implement a paid parking system. This would include the pay stations, the spare parts for the pay station. If we're talking, we talked about this in our report that we presented in January, was a license plate recognition enforcement component. Since you're entering your license plate into the pay station, the enforcement would be required to enforce that license plate by a visual recognition of the plate on the street, communicating with the back office software of the pay station, showing that plate is a paid patron within the system. As well as recommending all of the permits be a permit-by-plate, doing away with the hangtag permit that one would have to properly display to park in a permanent location, you would have, your license plate would effectively become your permit credential. So we're eliminating some overhead costs by recommending the license plate as the main credential in both cases here. And then some other general costs that are associated with the multi-space meter signs to brand the system. And then, of course, there's some marketing costs that would be involved in launching the program and communicating how the program works with both the members of the community and visitors to the community as well. And when you add those costs up, you're just shy of $400,000 for an initial rollout of the pay station equipment. So essentially, that's it. And I know we've gone through this kind of quickly. I suspect there may be some questions on some of the detail, but I suppose the appropriate thing to do would be to open that up at this point.
One question I do have is, how does handicap parking work in this whole system?
Ideally, you will still have a designated handicap space. There are, my understanding is, there are statutes or ordinance that require you to have so many designated disabled spaces on-street. Those folks will not have to interact with the pay station at all, because it's signed accordingly for a disabled person to park. So there will be no, there's never been any time limits on disabled parking for folks parking in those spaces, so that would essentially stay the same.
Thank you. So in essence, then, disabled people don't pay for parking because they don't have to go to a pay station, or?
That's been a discussion in Madison recently. They have rights to space, but they don't have the exemption from paying. And that's for discussion.
Okay.
I think that there isn't an official, you know, policy on that, but definitely guaranteeing them access is the first and foremost with that policy.
Okay.
So it'd be something the council would discuss as far as, is it free, or would they pay the prevailing rate?
Mark, Tony's not here, but do you know, do we have the GIS mapping capabilities already, or is that a software package thing that we would probably have to purchase, or? Jeff, do you have any idea?
I have to confirm that Adam Dorn with that, what our current status is.
Okay.
We have the capability of producing outline and drawing maps right now.
Okay. I know Electrical's got a lot of the utilities and stuff on GIS, so. I'm sure we have the capability, and that's a good point, because that's becoming a big thing.
We do have a lot of our utility infrastructure already mapped on the GIS system, so I would think that we could apply this into the parking lots and the parking spots as well.
The idea of the one side, implement mobile payment option and coordinate with free holiday parking programs, the first part of that mobile payment option, would that be an app on your phone that you could just pay from there without even going to one of those stations? Is that, is that what this would be, or what would it be?
An example is that on the block, there'll be a number, and you have the app already on your phone, and so you type in the block you're on, you type in your license plate, and it'll give you an option, you know, do you want to pay for an hour, two, max, whatever it may be?
So I'm on the 400 block of Main Street.
Correct.
Here's my license number, I want to go two hours.
Correct.
And then my card about 50.
You know, many communities offer this benefit where it'll notify you, you know, 15, 20, 30 minutes before your meter expires, and you have the option to extend from wherever you may be. From a revenue standpoint, that's always nice, because it's easy, and then from a customer service perspective, it's nice, because it mitigates receiving a citation and taking away that anxiety, and allows them to extend their stay. Because there's often concern in the community that, you know, meters or some type of time restriction will encourage people to leave town and not patronize stores or as many destinations as they would otherwise.
Or the stress that people have of, how much time do I really have on my meter this way? That takes it away, because it gives you a warning.
And that's just one example. You may have another of an app that would offer some functionality.
Is the app cost in the capital that you identified?
It is not in there today, and typically what happens on the app process is there's no upfront cost to the city, no capital cost to the city for that. It's a virtual software application, of course. The way the vendor typically makes their money is they would charge a percentage or a flat fee per application transaction. Typically, that's about 25 cents or 35 cents per transaction, but as a city, you would have the opportunity to negotiate that with the pay-by-phone vendor in a competitive bid process. But that's how they make their money. And most folks see it as, hey, if I can pay by my phone, I'll gladly pay a slight premium just to have that luxury of not having to be exposed to the elements or walk to that pay station down at the end of the road.
Oh, so that, for example, quarter that would get tacked on, so if I use the example I used with two hours, first 30 minutes free, it's a buck fifty plus a quarter convenience, so it'd be $1.75.
Correct.
In the bid, how was the bid's reaction? I don't know, Jeff, you were, if you want to come up, Jeff, because we need microphones, but what was the general reaction with the bid from either, from Bill, Jim, your perspective, Jeff, or Jim Collins? I'm just curious to how the bid responded to this.
They're comfortable with the idea. They would like to see better utilization of the parking lots, especially with employees occupying prime spots. That's been a very frequent concern that the bid has had. Again, as far as contribution, that's still left up for discussion of how they're going to contribute financially if we move forward with the paid parking system, but no, I think they're, more or less, they are on board, mostly because of better utilization of our existing facilities.
Were they, did they discuss, because that issue has been a concern with them in terms of, some businesses are very responsible with their employees, others let their employees, you know, literally leave the roost to go feed the meter, or move cars and things like that. Was that discussed about how to, I don't know, guilt the businesses into looking out for their customers' best interest?
Yeah, the subject of educating the business owners to encourage their employees to park, you know, in more or less satellite lots, has been discussed a lot. One example, City Center with their own private on-street or off-street parking, they very strictly police themselves, but unfortunately, we don't have that ability to police public parking lots, so. But there's been cases where business owners will park right in front of their business, and that's one, you know, it's almost like business suicide, I guess you could say, when you're occupying their own, you know, prime spot in front of their business.
Yeah, I would say generally, it was, they viewed the concept favorably. There were, you know, concerns about the impact or potential impact it may have, because I think change stirs that emotion up, and there were questions about the past and when meters were in place and why they came out. So there were questions that we scrubbed and talked about, but overall, end of the meeting, I believe there was support. meeting, I believe there was support for the idea of improving access to downtown, not only today, but also setting up a system that's scalable to support growth in the future. You know, as businesses come downtown and more demand for on-street spaces comes about, the meters will be a great tool to help manage the supply. And the way the policies are set up now, you know, there's adequate supply for employees to park in those non-premium locations, while still being cognizant of the needs of the residents. So, we had a lot of different issues we had to layer in, in trying not to alienate one group. But, you know, most communities have a policy, "customer first," and they kind of rally around that "customer first" policy. And second would be, you know, your residents and employees. So, that's something that we also have embedded in our thought process as we went through this process.
One concern I have, and it talks about the residential parking program, be the fourth bullet point, both non-reserved or non-assigned, with all the apartments in the downtown area, I got to believe if a tenant's got to walk two, three blocks because he can't find a parking space behind his apartment, he's going to be a pretty unhappy camper. And could that affect renting those properties, because the landlord can't guarantee them parking, other than two or three blocks away? And I know, sitting on the parking utility, a couple, four out of my seven years on council, that was always a concern of the land, of the owner of the building was having parking for their tenants.
Well, I think, maybe you can answer it, Jim, but when you guys did your utilization studies, it was, they were, the lots were highly underutilized, especially in the evening.
Right.
Unless you had a special event going on.
Right. And that goes back to your concern about the underutilization, because I know some of these people don't move their car for two, three, four, or five days, depending on where they work, to where their apartment is. So, but if they, let's just say, live in Oshkosh but work in Appleton, they come home and there's no place to park. They're going to be upset about that, even though they have a parking pass.
Well, I think the main way that that's remedied is that the permit stalls are going to go from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, unless you're a resident, no one should, you know, there really should be plenty of permit spots, because there's not going to be, most of the people that have those permits for their employment during the day, obviously, are going to be going home.
I'm just thinking, you know.
During those unique times when there's the highest of demand, many times, those permit spaces are being violated anyway by people who don't have rights.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there's no doubt about that.
So...
But at least this way, though, the police department can actually do enforcement, so they're parking in that spot, because it's reserved for that tenant. I'm just thinking, you know, Waterfest nights, or bigger events, the Leech, because it trickles all the way down to those, you know, parking lots down by the library, and behind gardenas and OBOs, and...
Sure.
But that's where a lot of our upstairs tenants are, too. So, it's a little bit of concern, but the bid doesn't seem to have, I mean...
This was, I know that, this was a big discussion when we met with the bid for, like Megan Lang, who's a land, a large landowner down there, and so she brought up these concerns, and that's where Walker came up with this policy, and seemed to be supportive of it, and thought it would address those concerns.
He drivers were flexibility.
Right.
So, there's choice. You know, the way it's set up now with the dedicated spot, you know, it directs them to a limited supply. Now, they have choice when it does ebb and flow as far as demand. So, that was important. And then, you know, flexibility going forward down the road. We want a system that's efficient, that's using the supply to the best of its ability, and having dedicated reserved spaces when people are gone and they sit vacant, it's just not the highest and best use of that public asset.
Right.
You'd rather park more cars. So, weaving in some of those guiding principles is how we arrived at the recommendation. Are there any thoughts or concerns about the front-end discussion of the presentation with the signage and the marketing branding, you know, bringing the parking house in order as far as public perception is concerned?
I think it's very critical that people know exactly what is free and where they can park. It does, right now, it's very confusing. It's very confusing. And you don't know what lot is private or public. We need, the signage is good, so I'm glad you've addressed that.
Did the bid have any feedback on the sign idea?
They're on board with that, you know, they think it's very important. They did mention at their bid budget committee last week that they may be open to helping pay for the signage.
I like the sign idea. I think it would look much better. I think it would bring a nice touch to our parking lots.
We just have to make sure we use the new logo.
Oops.
Happens for a while.
I have a big note here.
If we implemented everything but the paid parking, let's just say, we implement signage, which I know we need a lot of signage, I think it would be good to have GIS mapping to get to the different parking lots and everything. It would probably at least help get people into the right parking lots and reduce, I know the problem is, the utility's underwater, and that's part of our problem. We don't have money for parking lot improvements either at this point. And so, just wondered how much of the plan could be implemented if we tried some of this for a while and then moved forward, or if it's all-or-nothing plan.
The utility's in underwater regardless of which option, with paid-on-street or unpaid-on-street, because if you have paid-on-street, you have all the capital costs. If you don't have paid-on-street, it's really more what's going to be the most effective from your standpoint, what you think is the best policy. But one of the things that rings true in both scenarios is, the parking utility, we have to come to the conclusion that, many of your clients have come to the conclusion that it, if you're lucky if you pay for operation costs, but we got to make sure our operational costs are covered. We're floating a lot of debt already, we're going to have continued debt. The issue is, if we go into what looks to be nearly $400,000 in capital expenses, who's going to cover those costs? My opinion and my recommendation is that I think the bid should be a part, or if not part, a significant part of that, because that is exclusively to benefit downtown businesses. That's my opinion, that's my recommendation. If you don't think that, you may have to consider just doing no paid-on-street parking, but I think there's value to that, because there is a premium that you get. The biggest problem we've had in the past is that we had old meters that were unreliable, and we pulled them out because they just incensed people rather than helped encourage it. And that's probably a policy call for the council to wrestle with.
One other thought, too, as far as the names of the parking lots, even now, I have to stop and think of which is which, and we talk about, we've got to come up with some logical names for visitors to the community, as well as those people that live here. And I don't know how we do that, but I recall there's a parking lot in Chicago that they don't have the numbers, every floor is a month. It's very easy to remember where you park your car. I'm in October. So, we need a system that's very clear, as we tell people, park in this parking lot. It's not, we refer to them, it's what's the most logical for a new car, a visitor to the city.
Mark, how many years, do you know how many years we've gone without parking in the downtown area? I mean, paid-on...
Paid-on, it was, I believe, 2010 when we pulled out the meters.
And the university's pay station came into play, even though that's on, it's in their, kind of their jurisdiction, I guess you'd say, but it's actually in the city. So, did they get council approval to go to that? Paid parking on the, because you have to, like, turn around.
Any paid parking on the street was approved by council, and that was a series of incremental decisions that had been made over time. I'm not sure who necessarily may have some of the history of that, but that was a conscious decision meant to manage demand around the university.
Right.
That's really what pay systems are designed to do, is control demand, not necessarily to make money. Because truthfully, paid or unpaid, we're almost financially neutral on that issue, which kind of makes it easy to throw it out to you and say, which one do you want? But from a management standpoint, it appears as though the paid-on-street parking does have an element of managing the demand.
It does. It does. And as far as enforcement is concerned, there's, you know, the parameters are delineated. You're either in compliance or not.
Right.
Right now, with time, there may be more flexibility with that interpretation. So, I mean, I'd leave it up to law enforcement to speak to, you know, the preference, but we just know with meters, you can manage more efficiently the supply. And the intended purpose is really to ensure that the most valuable proximate real estate is available for those customers and short-term patrons, and it's not used by employees long-term. And there are a couple ways you can manage that outcome. You can be a punitive system, where you go after folks and you cite them. For example, if an employee's parking on-street and they're there for a certain period of time and exceed the limit, you know, you change behavior through citations. Or, you create, you know, economic incentives. And in this case, if I was an employee working downtown every day, knowing that I'd have to go out and move my car, or I'd have to pay to keep my car out in front, that may be disruptive, and I would, you know, comply and park my car where I know I can leave it there legally and I won't receive a citation. So, you create a system that encourages people to park where the intended locations are. And then, also with the paid system, long-term, as you defees any type of capital debt assigned to the fund, those funds can go into improving the system. So, you have a mechanism, a business model in place to support continued improvements in parking system. Current model, it's, you know, year to year. Even talking about getting, funding for signage for the $10,000, and we're talking to staff about that, and there's question, you know, where would that come from? And with the business model of having a revenue-of-fee-based system, you would know where that would be coming from. You'd be looking at a budget within a revenue-generating enterprise. But bottom line is that, you know, going forward, I mean, it's a local decision. Some communities move quick to go to meters. They see it as those who use parking should pay for parking, and then other communities take a subsidy approach. We're just going to continue to subsidize system and carry it on behalf of the entire
We have about a minute left. Are there any other questions from council?
Mark, when are you looking to bring it back to us for some kind of decision or discussion or direction?
Jeff has arranged a meeting for me to meet with the bid members, because I think we need to have a discussion with the bid. They've been going back and forth about what they should be participating. I think because of the nature of how it works for them, that they need to come to the table on that. We're looking at, if the council wants to do paid-on-street, we got to come up with $400,000. That is not in our capital improvement program, and I certainly have some ideas on how we could maybe do some cost sharing, but the bid's got to be, I believe the bid needs to step forward and say, this is important to us, and we need to support it. I appreciate Jeff bringing up the fact that they talked about signage, but signs are one thing. Right now, we're funding $38,000 a year just for the debt on the Jefferson Street 400-block lot. That doesn't include the debt that we are taking on through the general fund for Riverside Lots 1 and 2. So, those are, that's three-quarters of a million dollars, I believe, or even more than that, more. So, I mean, you're talking probably in the neighborhood of $1.5 to $2 million that the city's funding parking, and we haven't asked for a dime from the bid. I think if we're going to do this, we need to have that discussion. I kind of priming the pump for the council. I'm not sure where your thoughts are in terms of paid-on-street parking. That really is kind of the crux, because financially, we're indifferent to that decision. Trina and Jim and I have been wrestling with this issue as Walker's been settling us in on where their recommendations were going to be. So, I'm not sure where the council is on the paid-on-street. That's a rough one.
Just financially, I don't see anything happening. I mean, and then we're adding employees, you know, that's...
If there are no further questions, we will, Aaron, thank you, gentlemen, convene at 6:00.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.